Let's talk in session order. We have one resolution coming out of executive session. Resolution BOE thirty-nine, we sought to issue the Board of Education's majority of grievance fifteen sixteen oh three as presented to the Board at this meeting. I want to take a motion.
So good.
For those who favor it, please signify they're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions. And now, we come to the time when we now have District Council.
Hello, everybody. Before I begin, before we present our video this evening, I just want to take a moment to recognize our student photographer we are working with this year, Isabel Stitt. If everyone will like it. I just want to quickly say a little bit about her. We are really honored to have her with us this year. She's an AP and honor student with a diverse variety of interests, including color guard. She's a member of the International Relations Club that attended the Peace Laureate Summit in Spain last year. And while her photography is exceptional, she plans a career in science research. So, we are so happy to have her with us this year. So, thank you, Isabel. Okay, now on to our video tonight. Tonight, we're going to be looking at the Scholars Academy at Kingston High School. This is a great program that combines academic, social, and emotional components into a small learning community. It's really a great program, so let's take a closer look at it.
Our ninth grade retention rate was increasing significantly. So, we started researching and we actually created a small learning community. Each entering grade has a support team that works with the students. So, there's myself, who's the assistant principal, two guidance counselors, a social worker, a psychologist, a school nurse, our school resource officers, police officers, also our attendance official. So, we follow these students all the way through until they graduate high school in twelfth grade.
Hi, my name is Edie Schwimmer. I'm a school social worker at Kingston High School. My role is to make sure that the kids' social, emotional health is supported, that I respond when they're having a really difficult time, and also to do some prevention and assessment, making sure that the kids are okay, and to help them learn about what it means to be mentally healthy.
When we came here on the tour, it seemed really big, but when you get here, you realize that it's just this one space, so it's not even overwhelming.
The academy really helped bring a whole group of people together, and it was just a step, it was like being in middle school again, but just, just a little bit bigger, just to get the feel of what high school is about.
They walk into this building still with a lot of middle school-like behaviors and middle school-like patterns and those kinds of things, and they walk out of here with so much maturity and so many skills to help them succeed throughout high school.
The Scholars Academy has really helped tremendously. It allows us to keep track a little bit better and help the ninth graders transition to high school. So, I've noticed a big improvement in their performance and their grades and their success since the academy's been formed.
We've seen a graduation rate increase over the last couple of years, and one of the byproducts may be the fact that we have less students traveling throughout the entire campus, which allowed a smaller community of the upper grade levels to be in the main campus and the science building. So, I think that also helped, and I think the fact that we're now going to continue this cohort model throughout, I think we're going to continually help students and meet the social needs as well as the academic needs of our students, because we're going to know our students better.
I really, I can remember almost everything, every single one of my teachers, or how important they were, and how much they helped me pass. Lots of support. Like I said, I can't do this by myself.
We'll be supporting the ninth grade and following them throughout their entire four years of high school. At the Scholars Academy, that's where it all starts. They will get to know us, they will learn what it's like to be in the high school, and we really do a lot of tender loving care with our students so that they're ready to move out into the bigger environment of the high school by the end of the ninth grade year.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank Principal Reinhardt for being a part of the film and for being here this evening as well. So, thank you, Principal Reinhardt. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. If you don't reach the portion of meeting or more than participation, I have a list of people who signed up at every time during the two-minute discussion conversation. Please give your mic so that people on the screen can hear you, and if I'm an employee, you can leave. This department will let you know when you're approaching the two minutes. If you are exceeding the two minutes because you're late to delegation, please give your time to the next person and take your seat. If you elect as a spokesperson or what, you have something in writing, you can use it. The first person who signed up, Mr. Lamb.
Good evening, Herb Lamb. My wife Ann and I are still awaiting a response to our written comments at the last board meeting. Students who live closer than us to Kingston High School are still getting on the bus and getting on buses all over the district. The same is true in the middle school runs since policy states 1.5 miles, grade six to twelve. We still want to speak to the person, the Kingston District employee who bullied our child the first day of school on the bus circle and have not had any response to that. New York State Department of Education says you cannot selectively enforce a policy, which is what this Board of Education is doing by putting my daughter off the bus and not the others. We will be at every Board of Ed meeting to address this until we get the answers to our concerns and the problem is corrected. It's fine if our child walks as long as everybody else within 1.5 miles does. And lastly, maybe it's time that the Director of Transportation do her job and fix this.
Thank you. Next person who's signed up is Paul Wais.
Like all volunteer organizations, DWPC has been struggling with membership the past few years. We have tried multiple tactics, but unfortunately have not gotten the numbers we hoped for. At the end of last school year, we had a discussion with Dr. Padalino about having him come into our meetings and giving short presentations about different topics going on in the district to help encourage participation. At that time, Dr. Padalino agreed to this, however, our meeting dates did not work with his schedule. So, to accommodate him and to be collaborative with the district, we changed our meeting from first Thursday of the month to the second Wednesday, so Dr. Padalino could attend. With school ending and a lot going on, Dr. Padalino was too busy at the time to discuss ideas he had for these presentations, so I told him to contact me when things had slowed down. A couple of weeks before school started, I emailed Dr. Padalino about getting information on this topic. I sent him an email inquiring about this, so I clicked Add Them to the package we sent home at the beginning of the year. Once his phone got back to me after lending it to him at Crown Street and inquiring about my email, he asked to set up a meeting. I agreed to meet with him on Thursday, September first, for what I believe to be a discussion about what we talked about. On September first, I walked into his office, happy that we might have a way to draw in a crowd. It became very disappointing. The first thing Dr. Padalino said to me was at the BOE and had discussed at the August thirty-first BOE meeting, District-wide Parent Council as a whole, and that no one from the Board was willing to be at the BOE liaison for DWPC. Dr. Padalino went on to discuss that one of the reasons behind this was that DWPC is considered a great group. All we do is complain. He threw out some ideas which sounded like he and the district wanted to collaborate and have DWPC be something both the parents and district could get behind. He thought maybe some focus changes in the bylaws or perhaps a name change could help get rid of the stigma of DWPC being called a great group. I told him I didn't know if any of that would work to increase parent participation or not. He then suggested getting the principals and presidents of the PTAs together, and we could have a meeting on how we could make this work with parents in the district. He told me he would contact me. Using the term, when we, using the term, we, when there's only two people in the room, should include both and they...
Disappoint. Does someone else seem to have time too?
You can have one minute. I've changed my mind, you can act if I'm keeping mine of time.
Thank you.
Your time?
Using the term, we, when there is only two people in the room, should include both and who they represent. However, I have since then found out that not to be the case. On September eighth, I was notified by a friend of an article in the Freeman pertaining to DWPC and the Board's motion to renew recognition of the group. Since then, I've gotten more information on how these principals and PTA meeting, president meetings have started to occur, and other things pertaining to DWPC from other people, not one from any district member. My contact information is known not only by Dr. Padalino, but by multiple members of the Board. Frankly, I'm discouraged by the lack of what I would call professional courtesy and plain respect for members of the Board and Dr. Padalino, not only in regards to myself as co-chair of DWPC, but to all members of DWPC and all parents in the district. I find this was handled very smoothly and district-wide manner. After three years, I have tried to my best to collaborate with the district as much as possible and try to keep a healthy relationship going. Unfortunately, all successful relationships are two-way street. Both sides have to work at it, and from what I've seen over the past couple of weeks, this has not been the case. Just to clarify, something that was brought up during the meetings, the only and last time I heard from Dr. Padalino was at our meeting on September first, and I don't find during that meeting that he laid out an in-depth plan for me to agree to, as has been stated. More of the thoughts as to what we could do, more that he mentioned that there was a motion for non-recognition of DWPC being put forth at the September seventh meeting. Thank you for your time.
Who's this? Is this a parent?
Oh, I'm sorry. Heck, thank you. Who's that?
Hello. I am not sure what has brought the Board of Education to consider affronting DWPC, but I would like to take a mere hundred and twenty seconds to remind you and tell others what DWPC has been able to do in my fourteen years on the committee. That's a lot of time and effort that I wouldn't take back in a heartbeat. I feel that myself and the people that I've worked with have brought about sound and right changes and have made positive impacts on this district. We have had multiple food service difficulties. When lunch and research and recess were switched, we lobbied for, and many of our school building groups paid for hand sanitizer and/or lobbied for time for real hand washing to happen. When a food service provider for the district felt it fine to put pizza or hamburgers directly on a student's tray, DWPC advocated for a sheet of wax paper or a paper plate to be used to keep the food off the trays, and we were heard. And I know Dr. Padalino soon won't forget all the ketchup and condiment conversations. DWPC annually hosts several meetings. Our premier event has been the Meet the Candidates night. Other events have included roundtable meetings, food service forums, fundraising fairs, et cetera. Over the years, we've tackled class size issues, school size issues, transportation issues, class offerings, and a slew of many more items. DWPC members become very educated and informed parents. DWPC parents also learn advocacy skills by serving as their school reps. Many former DWPC members have landed successful seats on your Board of Education. To say that you want to unrecognized DWPC to me is unthinkable. Why wouldn't the Board of Ed want strong knowledgeable interest of parents? Our district has been in a period of rapid growth and change, regular changes, destructions, school consolidations. Personally, families are overworked and overbooked. All of these factors have taken a toll on DWPC. I think with some time's support, encouragement, and quite frankly, having everyone here tonight adhere to the bylaws of our group and focusing on the founding purpose of the group and common focus we all share, that the students, and that's students we're concerned with, that DWPC can remain your recognized parent group of the district. Thank you.
Next up is Mrs. Cusker.
My name's Diana, and I'm a proud parent of a graduate of college. I'm a proud parent of three high school students at our Kingston High School. The first time is my fifth child, the fifth grader at Milton. So, I can tell you I graduated, so you won't hear me really talking about elementary stuff without, from a perspective of a parent, except as an advocate for somebody else, for another parent. But I want to tell you, I want to thank every Board member who called me back. I jumped out Sunday night at ten o'clock. Somebody forwarded me a copy of something that had been in the paper, and I honestly didn't get any sleep. It was really distressing. So, I can tell you, the good news is, there's quite a few of us that will now become annual subscribers to the Daily Freeman, because that's how people who have been working for fifteen years, volunteering their time at the elementary, middle, and high school level, that's how we're going to get information, it seems, about what's really happening. Unfortunately, when I read in the paper recently, there's great things to say. Some of our teams are winning, some of our teams are losing, and we didn't get some funding. But the positive thing I want to say is tomorrow night, I'm getting to go to a meeting at our high school, and it's an opportunity for us to walk with people who are walking from New York City to Albany, trying to continue to work together and collaborate as an entire state, trying to make sure that school districts like ours get the funding that it needs. But at the moment, I'm here just as a parent of District-wide. My son graduated in 2012, and my first meeting was in third grade. And it's people like Maureen Bowers, who is the District-wide Parents Council, who has had the difficulty getting on the school board, that devoted time, energy, and attention to train people, to have the commitment, to advocate for every child in this district. So, I want you to know, I have lots of real positive things that I want to share. This is what District-wide wants to share: create peace. If you can't be kind, be quiet. Now, there's a lot of, I have a hundred positive things that I think District-wide Parents Council wants to tell new parents. And thank you for listening. Go ahead.
My daughter started kindergarten in Memphis eleven years ago, and my husband and I joined the Edson Parent Association, but something was missing. Selling stuff and talking about field trips, just, there had to be something else. And we learned about District-wide Parent Council, and I was intrigued. And as soon as the Edson rep position became available, I joined and I started to learn about stuff outside of the wants of Edson. Here was a place to learn about issues throughout the entire district, to talk with parents from other schools, and a place to get real information and to really make a difference. Most parents join parent groups because their kids are part of the school and they know they should be involved. But I joined not just for my children, but for all of the children of the district. Whether it's my child's problem or your child's problem, I want to make sure that it gets resolved. If a child is suffering, if they're being bullied, if they're afraid, I want to make it better. My heart is for all of the children of the district. And just like many of you sitting there, I'm in this for the long run. When my kids are graduated, I'm still going to be here fighting for the kids. This is my passion, and this is my life's work. And knowing how committed I am, how committed the members of DWPC are, and actually how committed all of you are, I'm baffled by this resolution, BOE thirty-four. Why did it get written? And I think about it, and I speculate, and I feel like I can come up with this communication. I think there was some problems with communication, and I have a few suggestions that I'd like to offer. First of all, I believe DWPC can be saved, and I want to be a part of helping to save it. I think training is needed in Robert's Rules of Order and conducting effective meetings, but I want us to make sure we remember to balance efficiency with empathy. Sometimes, parents need to be able to talk for longer than thirty seconds or two minutes. They need to be able to share their hearts. We need to be able to bridge the gap of communication between us and you, and maybe we need some outside help with that, and maybe there'd be some funding for that. We also need to make sure that everyone understands the purpose and the goals of District-wide and how to best achieve those goals. DWPC isn't more than a need to just send information home to our local schools. So, I ask you, please, do not continue with this resolution and come along and work with us, please. Thank you.
There's your project.
You've changed your mind, just tell him you've changed your mind.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board at this point? Was it Bowers?
I have not signed up, but I wanted to address the Board on the issue of District-wide Parents Council. I also am a longtime member of the group, going back to the nineteen eighty section. And I have a concern about the group, and it may be able to be saved. It may be able to be saved going forward in a different format, with different understandings. My concerns over the last few years is that it really has taken a very political stance on issues, which is not a bad thing. Certainly, anybody who knows me over the last thirty years knows that I've not always been liked by Board members and past superintendents, maybe even current Board members. Hopefully not. Okay. And there were times when parents met outside of the district to discuss important issues and advocate. I'm not suggesting that District-wide Parents Council needs to always agree with everything. However, my concern is that the intent was that it was a representative group that represented from each school, and if the group is going to take positions that can have a variety of perspectives and a variety of, and can be somewhat controversial, I think that it behooves us to acknowledge that we are not representative of all of the parents in the district. And I understand the Board, obviously, on it, has said that they will not send a liaison, which has always been a part of the process. That's so important for the communication, and I'm watching that thirty-second sign. And I can tell you, having been involved as a parent for so many years and then as the liaison, it did become harder and harder for me, who really have the heart and soul of District-wide, to be that person. I found myself so many times feeling at odds and feeling not, Diana once said, not supportive, but I think it was not respectful.
What else should address the Board at this point? Any amendments for August thirty-first? Any amendments, questions, or objections? All those in favor of moving August thirty-first minutes, please say the word is saying aye. We do not have the minutes for this hearing. We will have them at the next. Which brings us to, Mr. President, your turn to roll to Dr. Padalino.
Hey, Ms. Chair. I don't have a lengthy, well, I have a few presentations, but I did want to say one thing before we started. Last month, or last two weeks ago, I sent just a kind of a overview of the summer school programs for the Board that were in the package. One thing I did not have in there was about our lunch, our food service program that we engaged this summer, and I do just want to give you a quick, one number. Eighteen thousand four hundred and thirteen meals were served to the students in Kingston City School District this summer by our food service department. So, that's eighteen thousand four hundred and thirteen. That's inclusive of the parks, the school district lunches and breakfast, and the snacks that were provided there. So, you know, we, so first year doing it, we took a little bit of a loss, but almost twenty thousand meals were served to students in Kingston City School District over the summer. So, we're going to work with the city and the parks to kind of see what we can do to make this better. First year is always, and again, first year is always the hardest, and we still serve eighteen thousand, you know, meals, so we're very pleased with that, and I just want the Board to be aware of that. And I will make a full report on the financial report from Ed available to the Board and the Audit Finance Committee as soon as that gets all put together and efficient. Okay.
Can I add a comment about that? I want to congratulate you. I'll take issue with the small loss comment, because I think really it was overall a big gain. So, I would like to thank everybody that was involved in it.
Any other comments?
Okay, next, we have our business department is going to do a quick budget primer, it was in the annotated calendar, for actually next meeting, but I think next meeting, we're going to have several presentations, so I thought this would be earlier, this would be a little... So, I'm sorry, Mr. Olson and Mrs. Switter.
Thank you for inviting us back this year. I guess we'll say it there, Mr. Chauncey. So, we want to breeze through about a dozen slides and just offer some comments about the budget process. The budget is sort of a continuous process. We're always getting information, even now, that will affect next year's budget. So, although it's, although we talk about starting the budget process, in our view, in best field, sure, the budget process never really ends. So, the list of goals here are very similar to the list of goals that we had for last year's budget. I imagine many school districts have similar goals in their budget process: support student achievement, being, program and maintain programs. I don't know, perhaps I don't need to read them to you, they're fairly clear.
Some of us can't see. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do you want me to read them now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Seek public input, communication with stakeholders, meet goals identified by the Board of Education and superintendent, equitable people allocation, long-range fiscal stability, and of course, keeping within the tax levy limit, otherwise known by some as the tax gap. I don't know, do you want to have questions as we go this year, or should we just go through it and then? Okay.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Well, so, this is, here's some highlights from, that reflect this year's budget. First of all, the vote, the budget vote, sixty-four point two percent of voters approved the budget this year. The total general fund budget went up by three, about three point three percent to one hundred and sixty-one million dollars, closer to one sixty-two, actually, if you're a mathematician. Revenues to support the budget, I'm sorry, went up by about a little over five percent, which included primarily a state aid increase of about five percent. The GE restoration, the GEA restoration, which was large two years ago, smaller this year, will disappear for next year, so that, that is, will be gone. And then the levy, which of course is of interest to everyone, went up by one point nine eight percent, which is what the voters approved, one point nine percent increase. Our maximum allowable levy was three point three seven percent, which takes into account factors such as our building project and such. So, a hundred million dollars, that's the first, this is the first year that the tax levy in the Kingston City School District was over a hundred million dollars.
Yeah. These are just a couple of highlights that I just wanted to mention, that changes this year that have to do with the tax levy and the school tax bills. This year, the law, there was a law for the tax freeze, the property tax freeze rebate. That was a three-year program by the state in which the first year taxpayers received a rebate from the state, which represented the difference in their school tax bill from the prior year. So, because the district was tax-free compliant and developed a compliance and efficiency plan, we were able to enable our homeowners, star-dent homeowners in our district to receive that credit. The second year of that, of the tax rebate program was homeowners receiving star got a rebate check in the amount that represented the change in their school tax, as well as a change in their municipal tax if the municipality was also tax-free compliant. This is the last year, and the law has changed again. This year, the rebate will go only for the municipal change, but there's a new, there are two new things, actually, the next one's on the... Actually, the next one's on the next page. So there's a couple of different things that changed this year with star. As of August of last year, new homeowners who apply for star will not get the star taken off their tax bill. So people who apply for star after, before, after August of last year, prior to that, you would apply for star with your assessor's office, and it would come off your tax bill, and every year you see that six hundred and fifty dollars or whatever, that amount goes up by two percent every year under the two percent tax cap law. And, you know, that continues, and if you're a star exempt enhanced, then you would apply to certain income eligibility, and you would reapply every year, and we get that off our tax bill. So most taxpayers see the gross amount on their bill of the calculated tax levy amount, and then it's reduced by their star credit essentially. So the net, the net calculation is what the actual tax bill is. With the new law, these group of homeowners who purchased after August of last year will not get that credit on their tax bill. They won't get the six hundred dollars off their tax bill or thirteen hundred dollars for star enhanced. They're going to get a check from the state in the amount that they would have gotten if they had star. So it kind of complicated things this year for taxpayers. So you have some taxpayers who are getting it off their tax bill, so when they kind of compare the tax bills, there's some discrepancies. So it's just a matter of the law change and communication on that. Two things that we are pleased to have presented this year, thanks to the board. Last year was the first year of the alternative veterans exemption, which enabled the district to offer savings to those who served in specific conflicts. The first year, the savings that the veterans realized was about seven hundred thousand dollars. This year, the calculation we came up with was about six hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So those veterans received at least two to three hundred dollars off their school tax bill for having that exemption. And this was the first year that the board had supported and adopted a sliding scale senior exemption. Prior to this year, our senior exemption, aside from the star enhanced, allowed fifty percent of an assessment reduction if your income limit was twenty thousand or below. The board supported and approved a sliding scale, like many of the towns and municipalities and other school districts do, that enables a higher, higher income level with lower, reduced amount of percentages. So now we can offer twenty to sixty percent on senior exemptions off assessment to higher income levels. And quite frankly, we've had a lot of people that have come, and they've even come early because they think their bill was wrong, because it was so much less, and they were just so happy. And, you know, not very often that taxpayers come up and say, I want to kiss you. So when they say that, I'm very happy. So we're very, we're very excited about that. The amount that this senior, the value that was shifted, the value that it actually represented, I didn't, wasn't able, I isolated totally, but it was about two hundred and twenty thousand more than the prior year. So last year's amount was, just had the fifty percent less, and this incorporated the rest of the levels of the sliding scale. So that's a very positive, we've had a lot of positive results and reaction from our taxpayers. We're very happy to receive those exemptions, so thank you to the board and for supporting us. So this goes back to the tax freeze rebate. This year, so this law, they changed the law, and it's gotten a little complicated. But for the current year, instead of getting the tax rebate that we got last year, for this year only, if the district complied with the property tax cap, which we did, and homeowner has a twenty fourteen tax year income of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or less, and they are star eligible, they will receive, and it's outside of New York City, they will receive a check from the state for a hundred and eighty-five dollars. Now, this program has three more years, and the next three years have varying percentage of star as the rebate amount. So the state has made it a little complicated, but there's a schedule, and it's out, and all this information is out on the New York State Office of, oh, it's actually the New York State Tax Department under star information. So, and as I mentioned earlier, the twenty sixteen property tax freeze credit was for the municipal bill. So just a little bit of different things happening, but people are either seeing tax relief on their bill from their exemptions that they currently have, from the expanded exemptions. And in addition to that, the state will be sending checks, rebate checks, to help offset, either in the form of a star credit, which is for new star owners, or rebate credit, which is to help offset the check, your tax bill. When they come, I don't, bye.
That was all really complicated stuff. I, I hope that, you know, we were able to get something, something out of that. In that case, in the budget development process here, we have traditionally had budget forums, which will, which will be scheduled, I think, probably shortly, if they're not already scheduled.
Well, the first one is November thirty.
November thirty.
That'll be the first public forum for discussion for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighth session.
Thank you, from November thirty, first forum. That'll be right after Thanksgiving, I guess. And then, of course, in the, in the office itself, we do a review and assessment of programs of all, of all sorts, staffing levels, class sizes, building level requests, transportation facilities, BOSI's programs, and other contracted services. And then there's a number of costs that we generally have to consider fixed. We have salaries and contractual obligations. We have employee benefits, which include retirement and health insurance. And then we have, of course, debt service payments, which are in a, on an upward trend right now due to the capital, the project. And then, of course, the Board of Education input, review, and approval. The board must, must ultimately approve the budget.
I just want to say, our beginning point primarily is, we start with prior year's budget. And we just start by rolling it over to see where we are, and that's going to be our baseline budget in any given year. A lot of the factors, especially for some of the fixed costs, we don't get that information until, sometimes even after we have to have the budget to the state on March first, or for board adoption in mid-April. Some of the state aid runs, the state aid numbers, we have, our debt service payments are fixed, some of our contractual obligations, we know in advance if we have, you know, those are out several years. Things like health insurance percentage increases, those types of things we don't really know when we're first at, in the development process. So the best we do is start where we are at the current year, we look at the last year's trends, we look at the last year's expenditures, see where we need to tweak things, see where there's additional needs or fewer needs that we can work around to try to, you know, anticipate some of these other costs that we won't know that will have future, an impact when we get closer to really tweaking the bottom line budget and then what the total cost is going to be.
So the current year's budget, as we described earlier, is a hundred and sixty-one million dollar budget. I also mentioned that the school tax levy is in excess of a hundred million dollars. The other three components which add up to the one hundred and sixty-one million, from a revenue perspective, are state aid, which as you see is fifty-six million dollars, about thirty-five percent of the budget. Other revenues, which include, includes what?
Services, tuition payments for other school districts, pilots, interest, interest on taxes.
Those things. It's a small portion of the budget.
Trap metal.
And then the appropriated fund balance, which we, which we take, some of our fund balance put into the budget is a million dollars in this case. So that, those are the sources, the revenue sources essentially that add up to the, to balance the budget at one hundred and sixty-one million dollars. So this is the expense side, the appropriation side of the budget. This is how, how the money is spent. And for those who, you all, I'll just go around, around the disc here. Our labor costs, which include salaries and benefits, are, make up seventy-five and a half percent of the budget. Obviously, an enormous amount. BOSI services at six point five. We buy a lot of different things from BOSI's, including I T of work and I T services, special education services, many others. Equipment supplies and textbooks, about a percent and a half of the budget. Tuition payments, which are tuition payments that we're managing outside of our, our, for four percent contractual, another, another four percent debt service, another close to four percent. And that was two percent last year, by the way, the debt service. And then transportation, about four and a half percent. So three-quarters of the budget is labor and benefits. So that's obviously the dominant part that goes without saying, I suppose. Now, if you take that seventy-five and a half percent of the budget, the labor and benefits, and just, just focus on that, that, this is how that portion is broken up. Salaries are sixty percent of that seventy-five and a half percent. Retirement costs, which include FICA, which I would call a retirement cost, is our twelve and, twelve and a half percent approximately. Health insurance, twenty-five, almost twenty-six percent of that seventy-five and a half percent of labor and benefits is made up of health insurance costs. And then other employee benefits, which is a couple minor items, are under one percent. So that's, that's the seventy-five and a half percent of salaries and benefits, salaries, wages, benefits of that right now.
And I just would like to point out, when we're talking about the retirement, we're talking about the New York State district retirement system and the New York State employees retirement system. So our annual contributions to retirement systems are based on a statewide percentage. So every district is, is going to have the same percentage that they have to pay on their teacher salaries to the TRS and their employee salaries within the various tiers. But those percentage changes can really have dramatic impact on your budget. As we learned, the year that they went up to seventeen percent and we had an automatic two million dollar addition to our appropriations. We were fortunate in the last budget that the rate had actually gone down, so that that two million, the two million dollars that we were able to save in that line item was absorbed within the rest of the budget and prevented the budget from going up higher. We don't know, those rates usually aren't projected, again, or until early in the year, in January. So again, we have a lot of, you know, unknowns that we have to work around, so. But at the current way, the current, current year rate is eleven point three four three, it's eleven something percent. So, which is down from, but we don't know whether it's going to be next year, it depends on the retirement system and the investments.
For those of you who prefer numbers rather than percentages, this disc, the salaries and benefits, represent over a hundred and twenty million dollars of the one hundred and sixty-one million dollars budget. And so the retirement piece that Beth is talking about, that little twelve point six slice, that's worth about fifteen million dollars all by itself. So retirement costs alone, about fifteen million dollars. And obviously, since twelve point six is about half of the health insurance, you can quickly extrapolate that the health insurance costs for the district are on the order of twenty-six million dollars or, is that right? Yeah. More than double, probably, probably a little higher than that. So these are big numbers.
Sure, these are just some of the things that are going to impact our budget going forward and what our constraints are, and we discussed some of them a bit. We talked about fixed costs, projections, and our contractual obligations. Obviously, some of those are going to be known, they're going to be the first, first things that we're going to develop into the budget. We know what our debt service are going to be on the current bonds and bands that we have outstanding. We were hoping that, you know, we're waiting on state projections. We are done with gap elimination, so there's no question about how much of that we're going to get back, if we're going to get back any of that back. We don't know the foundation aid formula, funding by the state is going to be. In the past, in this past budget, there was an extra component for community schools. It sounded originally like it was going to be an additional piece of aid, but in the end, they backed it into your aid. So actually, you know, our aid figure included this two hundred and some odd thousand dollars that we had to actually pull out from our aid and allocate that to specific initiatives. The other thing is the two percent tax cap, which obviously has, has an impact on where our budget, the total appropriations and the resulting tax levy. And that calculation, as, as we may know, and that we usually talk about at all of our budget forums, the two percent tax cap is not really a two percent tax cap. It's actually a calculation, usually comes out different for every single school district. We were fortunate last year in having a tax levy limit of three point three seven percent, whereas star raise was point one two percent. And different, districts are different. And part of that is a result of the calculation and the factors that go into the calculation. So just want to talk about a couple of factors that are in the calculation that will determine our maximum allowable tax levy growth for next year. The first factor is tax-based growth factor. That's specific to our district. The prior year, it was point four six, that's less than one percent. The other factor is an allowable growth factor. This is for, this goes in everyone's, all districts' calculation, and this is where the two percent comes from. This is the lesser of CPI or two percent. The CPI last year was pretty low.
It was about two percent.
The prior year allowable growth factor was point one two percent, which is pretty low. So basically, you're taking your tax levy and you're multiplying it by, I mean, the, the amount of additional dollars that were added, it was levy, so those two factors were very small. Because of the way that the formula runs, even though we did, we did levy a levy, levy, a tax levy that was below the maximum allowable, we do not have any carryover, because the way the carryover is calculated, it's calculated on prior to exempt, exemptions number. So we didn't have any carryover. We did that last year, and that contributed to our three point three seven, we had available carryover from the prior year. Next year, we will not have available carryover. And the other factor that goes in there that allowed us to have a higher levy this year was your capital tax levy, which is the difference between your capital debt service, where would your debt service scheduled, all your bonds and bands payable, and your projected state building aid. Now, our, our building aid, that is going to be, that number there was bigger this year because we are, our, our debt service payments are growing. And so next year, they're going to be, they went higher this year, so that number was bigger. So next year, we anticipate that percentage to be lower. So all in all, we're projecting early, and it's early to tell at this point, that our maximum allowable tax levy growth will be less than two percent, which is, you know. And, and it's early, and we're hopeful, but we have to, you know, understand that that might be our constraint for when we're developing this budget for next year. Another thing I want to discuss in conjunction with this, it's not really budget related, but it is budget related, is fund balance. And fund balance is actually a balance sheet item of your assets and liabilities. And there's different types of fund balance. And the first type of fund balance is your unassigned fund balance, and that has been commonly known as the four percent. And we're allow, we're allowed to retain four percent of our next year's, our current year's budget as unassigned fund balance. We also have appropriated fund balance, and that appropriated fund balance is the amount we allocate to budget revenues. So at the end of last year, we appropriate a million dollars towards the revenues for the next year, and that's called appropriated fund balance. It was money that was left over from last year, and we appropriated it towards this year's budget to reduce the tax money. And then there are, it's also restricted fund balance. And restricted fund balance are, is fund balance that's held in legal reserves. And these different legal reserves, these are the, the reserves that are listed here are the reserves that the Kingston City School District has legally authorized these reserves, and we have funds in these separate reserve accounts. Tax search rate reserve, the capital reserve, employees retirement system reserve, unemployment reserve, liability reserve, and property loss reserve. And what these reserves serve is they reduce your future liabilities in specific areas. They, each reserve has specific laws that govern how they're established, how they're funded, how they're spent, and they all vary, what you can do with remaining balances, and there's, so. But the reserves that we have are all legal reserves. And there's, so, but the reserves that we have are all legal reserves.
So in particular, the tax surcharge area reserve has been newsworthy recently because we have some developments in this area that have suffered economically. And they are appealing to the various assessment boards to have their assessments reduced. And it could even go back several years. So we will have to pay a fairly large amount of money out of that tax surcharge area reserve to settle some of those issues.
And the important thing with that in conjunction with the budget is that if we didn't have a reserve, a legal reserve established from prior year's fund balance for these liabilities, we would have to come up with that money mid-year. If we had a settlement, a tax surcharge settlement or other type of settlement, and if it was for $2 million and we didn't have a reserve, we would either have to borrow the money or send people home, I mean, to come up with. So by establishing these reserves and having the foresight to, you know, anticipate what the liability is to the district, we can offset spikes in the tax levy for those reasons. And again, here are just some of the purposes and uses. These are established by board resolution or board approval, funded from excess funds at the end of the budget year or upon board of ed resolution. They're targeted towards specific liabilities. Reduce future tax levy increases by appropriating towards the budget. You can use those also towards, allocate towards the budget if they're not needed. And use them to avoid large tax swings. Reduce the possibility of fiscal stress when they do your fiscal swings. The comptroller's office looks at your fiscal stress. And when you're financing for capital projects, one of the first things they ask you is, do you have reserves? What does your financial picture look like? How are you, you know, fiscally set? And those are all indicators of financially stable school district.
And they have a direct impact on what funds, what interest rate you pay on borrowing.
Two of the reserve funds I just wanted specifically to bring up again were the capital reserve fund. This capital reserve fund is a new capital reserve fund that was voter approved last May. And it has a ten-year life and it's funded by unexpended appropriations up to $10 million maximum. And so the board at the end of this current, the current fifteenth, the fifteenth, sixteenth school year appropriated $3 million to the capital reserve fund. So that, the money in the capital reserve fund can be used to offset future costs of future building projects, thus eliminating the need for debt for those projects in the regular general fund budget. So it's essentially a prepayment, some of your future debt on those.
And building projects obviously include new things that we might build, such as the high schools or things that we might need to repair that require a large amount of money.
Just to note, as I mentioned, the reserves have different legal parameters around them and specifications. And in order to expend from the capital reserve also requires voter approval. So if you put a building project out, you would specify that the funding would be from the capital reserve. And that's how the voters would approve that. And the other one that we have used and is very important to us and is obviously through its paper is critical is the tax surcharge reserve fund. And the tax surcharge reserve fund, there is a four-year maximum on the tax surcharge reserve fund. So technically, you're supposed to look at your tax surchargeary liabilities, how many petitions you have outstanding on assessment reductions, and four years bringing the money back. Unfortunately, for our district, we have a list of outstanding tax surchargeary petitions. So annually, along with the audit finance committee, we review the list. We make sure that our tax surchargeary reserve is sufficient enough to protect us from any of the liabilities.
So as many of you know, we anticipate a seven-figure removal from that reserve for a situation out in the old IBM area. And we, what's it called, Hudson Valley Mall is making noises about a possible action too. So this tax surcharge reserve fund will be tapped. This brings us back to an earlier page, the budget goals. And we put them on here because, of course, they're important. Supporting student achievement all the way down to keeping within the tax levy limit and long-range fiscal stability. We put it up here again because we thought we'd close with that since they're, you know, they're sort of the key to the budget. The, I think the district's budget, I guess you could say any organization's budget, you read it, it'll tell you what's important to that organization. And we hope that readers of our budget will be able to ascertain that these are the important things to this district. That's it.
If you tap out the tertiary fund because of the problems in the town roster, how would we replenish it? Can you take it from other reserve funds?
We have, we have a list of tax surchargeary petitions outstanding on the district at any given time. Typically, they are filed prior to beginning of school tax year. So they're filed in July typically. So we look at that list every year. Currently, we have about, we have, to cover that liability, we have about seventy-five percent. So we have, we feel that we are continually looking at that and have enough that we aren't going to tap it out. Now, to fund that, the reserves are all funded in different ways. And the tax surchargeary reserve can be funded through board approval of appropriated fund balance at the end of the year or the voters could vote on a line item in the budget. So typically, we funded it in the past from unexpended fund balance at the end of the year.
Any other questions?
So I just think on that, so that unappropriated fund balance of six to four percent, that's available to use in an emergency.
Correct.
We've never had to use it.
Correct.
At least in the time I've been on the board.
Correct.
There are districts that have had to use their, that fund balance. And it puts them in severe distress and we've been fortunate not to have to do that.
And again, when state is analyzing your fiscal stress factors and how fiscally stable you are, that's another thing that they look at, that you have maintained that percent. And several years ago, I don't know how many years ago, it was two percent. And it took a lot for them to get that up to four percent.
That is our ultimate backup.
So I'll make two more comments. One, it's a very thorough presentation. And I thank you for the work that went into it. I think it's very understandable and a good way to start our budget process for the next year. And the last comment I'll make is that the checks from the state will probably come like November 30th.
Exactly.
Something like that.
Exactly.
A few days before the election.
I'd like to request that we make that available in the board's library so that, you know, we can refer to it. Actually, technically, if you check your annotated calendar, I know we're not really in the habit during that every meeting now. We're going to be making revisions to your annotated calendar, you know, so it's really a living document. It's not going to be static, it's going to change. So we changed the budget presentation to receive instead of actual fifth because we have two other presentations that evening. It means our preliminary discussion of the budget can start today, board priorities. But I would like you to hold that until the board portion of the agenda because we still have Orange Rep and KNSQ and VDL waiting to present our superintendent's report. And I'll give you time to, if you haven't already, if you have like questions, maybe.
As Ms. Shear said, the next presentation for the superintendent's report is our KNSQ VDL twice a month presentation, or once a month presentation. And I know we took, I do want to thank Rodden and Scott and Mike Belima. They took us, they took the facilities committee on a tour last Tuesday, Tuesday plus?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah, Wednesday, the fourteenth. And we appreciate it. It was great to see the progress in the building and get my shoes dirty.
That certainly happened. Before we get into the presentation itself, I just wanted to make mention again that we have an ongoing shadowing program, an internship program, not an internship, I'm sorry, a shadowing program. And we currently have two additional students that get some time at our on-job site over the summer. And the two students will continue until they reach their maximum hours for however long they probably will be in the next couple of months. They're there a couple of days a week. I also want to point out that everyone should have received their monthly summer report as well as a change of annual summer report.
An update on upcoming projects. We are currently putting together the bid package for the main heating system. And that will be going out to bid sometime in October. And we're hoping to bring recommendations to the board in December of 2016 this year. And then construction would start next year. The fieldhouse phase two package, as you recall, we are packaging that to also go out this year before the end of the year. And the plan is to bring recommendations for that bid package to contractors sometime in January of 2017. And then that work would also start in the summer of next year of 2017. Main renovations package, there's really nothing new to report. We are kind of on hold with that currently. And then just a brief report about the team, pre-construction efforts. We continue to work behind the scenes to make sure that the packages are complete and ready to go out to bid and continue to refine those over the next week or two for the heating. And again, the other package for the phase two fieldhouse.
Question?
Yes.
On those two items, so what is the anticipated amount of the heating contract approximately?
That's a good question. I don't know, I think it is about $3 million.
I think it's about $3 million.
And would that be one contract?
No, it would be multiple contractors, prime contracts.
And then the fieldhouse will be?
Multiple.
Multiple also. And I think it's in the five to six million dollar range for the fieldhouse.
So the update so far for the fieldhouse, fieldhouse phase one is complete and out of pipe. We got our certificate by PNC August 31st. And we are just doing a few, there's a few minor punch list items that we're finishing up now, or the contractors are finishing up. So we have some of the photos of the fieldhouse as it is now. Finished there with the exterior lighting. This is the fitness center. This is the lobby into the fitness center. This is the downstairs wrestling room currently at the fieldhouse. And then, of course, the fitness center itself upstairs with the equipment already. And I believe being used.
Correct.
And of course, both of the locker rooms, the boys' and the girls' locker rooms downstairs were also renovated and have been finished. So the phase two basically will incorporate the pool room, locker rooms, and the new gym floor and the bounds of the fieldhouse itself. The academic core building project has updates and highlights. The east edition is now, we're concentrating on some interior work, the framing, classrooms, mechanical work, rough-ins, duct work, all of that has started on the east edition. And we will be finalizing the exterior over the course of the next four to eight weeks with our, with our niché hub panels that are due. We just had to wait for the red starter strip, which takes a couple of weeks to get. So once we get that, the niché hub panels will go live. On the west edition, you know, as much as we're concentrating on the interior on the east now, we're also concentrating on the exterior on the west edition. And they've started the masonry and the brickwork and we've started the framing, exterior framing. In the next couple of weeks, they'll be putting the roof on. And they have completed the storm drainage in that hole on the west side and everything. So it will continue over the course of the next four or five months, just to be working on the exterior. And then we'll also, as soon as the interior framing and everything is done on the east edition, then we'll jump over and start the west.
What is CMU an acronym for?
Concrete.
Basement.
Masonry units, sorry.
Concrete blocks.
It's either block or brick. Well, yeah, and that includes the brick too.
Right.
In the academic core, the only thing that we've really done at this point is on September 19th, we did the boiler switch over so that the new boilers were put into place. And we're continuing to do some work in the mechanical room down in that lower level, but we haven't really done up in the core of the building itself. Of course, we're still doing all the MEP coordination work and scheduling details and submittals and getting everything finalized for the work in the core. To look ahead, the exterior finishes again, east-west edition. Stairs on the west edition will start to go into place. And the rooftop units will start to be placed. Right now, it's about a 12-week lead time. They've been released and we'll be finalizing the steel and the curb that the rooftop units will sit on over the course of the next four to six weeks. And then we'll set the units themselves. So as you can see, we're moving right along with the east editions. I can see it, sorry. Let me get out of the way. This is the east edition right now. As you know, there's technology rooms on every other floor and the, what's the name of the other area? We have the computer rooms and then the technology areas up on every other floor. This is where, what you see here is just a stair tower on the north end of the east edition. And again, this is the inside. You can see just interior framing where the classrooms and everything are. You can see the corridor, corridor is 12 foot wide now. They'll have lockers down each side, so they'll narrow that up a little bit. And then you can see some mechanical work. Windows also on the east edition will be done the end of this month. And then we'll start the windows on the west edition. And this is the west edition. As you can see, they've started some of the brickwork underneath and around the corner. I don't know if I have one. On the lower level, below this floor here, this is actually the second floor. Below this floor here, the masonry work is pretty, it's close to being done. All the brick and everything is in place. This is the exterior framing that they're putting on now. That was quick. It's very exciting and it's, it's really starting to come together now. I know the people that have taken the tours can actually see the classroom spaces and where everybody will be. And everything at this point is moving along on schedule.
Questions?
Yes, Mr. Shaw. Two questions. Do any of the contractors have apprentice programs in place?
Not that, not that I know of.
The second question is, what is the footprint of each of the additions? I asked that before. Size wise? The area, the floor area of, say, one floor.
I don't know that offhand. But I'll bring it back to you the next time we come.
And last time you asked us to bring it back to you, this time.
My apologies, but I will report back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shaw has to just give a clarification of each wing of the wings?
Well, I mean, whatever, you know.
New additions.
Yeah, the new addition. What is the area per floor?
Per floor.
Okay. We'll get to an actual number per floor.
Scott, if you get that to me in the morning, I'll send that out to the board.
Definitely.
Thank you.
This might not be for our building team personally. It looks spectacular and so exciting. See the cable in the fieldhouse and the lighting and the stairs, spectacular. So thank you. But my question is, my favorite. But my question is, my favorite Dr. Catalino on the cabinet, the fitness center, I know we have the CO now, and I was just curious, is it being used by classes or teams or are people in there?
It's actually being used by both, and Kirk can talk to this.
I'm not sure about teams, it's definitely being used through ninth period.
Ninth period?
Through, all the way through. I know it's being used up through eighth. And I know it's now, they've extended it to students that are using it after school. The PE teachers are staying through ninth.
So, the interim AD has talked to the coaches of the teams. I know Mr. Bottalotto has requested a key, so he's going to bring in the football team. So, I don't know that they're actually doing it now, but it's in motion.
Any other questions? Thank you, as always.
Thank you.
Scott, we'll move to the second question for you.
Catalino? Which brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any resolutions that interest you that could be in the consent agenda? All those who are in motion to accept it on the consent agenda?
Both.
Do you think so? All those who are accepting the consent agenda, please give a whether saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And I just want to see any dogmations. Mr. Shaughnessy, request of individual certification. We have Jason Borne. So, we're up to old business now. Yes, Mr. Shaughnessy?
I'd like to move for reconsideration of BOE 34, which was removed from the consent agenda. It's the DWPC resolution.
Second.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
So, I moved it, and I thank you for the second, just so we could have an opportunity to discuss it. I know that it's been very controversial in the community among the people who have participated in DWPC. And, you know, I just want to, from my perspective, I just want to assure people that we're going to take a transparent approach to this, to reconstituting it, or to repairing it, or reforming it, or I don't know what the word is. But, you know, certainly, it's from my perspective, I think it needs to be a dialogue between parents, the board, and the administration. So, that's one comment. The second comment is that, I know in the article that appeared in the Freeman, I made some somewhat inflammatory remarks about DWPC. I explained to the board in executive session when we were asking for attorney comment about the whole situation that was, when I thought about it today, I just wanted to say it's sort of a Trumpian remark on my part, and wanted to apologize for it, which is not Trump.
Mrs. Jordan? I had some very energetic conversations with some very dedicated parents who were affiliated with, there's one mosquito in this room. There's several mosquitoes, excuse me, about the DWPC. And I just wanted to ask these questions to clarify some statements that, or questions that I had after these conversations. One of them is, what are the New York State requirements for a parent committee on the district level? And is the DWPC mandated?
No. There's no parent group requirement in any of the regs. There's parent engagement in New York State, in the, as far as encouragement. And Title I has parent engagement requirements, but no, there's no, nothing says you have to have a parent group of any, you know, of a specific need.
So, when you say Title I has a requirement, is that in a Title I assigned building?
Yes.
That there's a parent?
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be a parent group, it's just at a certain level of parent engagement. And certainly, it really is about the funding and the expenditures of the funding of certain parts that have to be expended for parent engagement activities.
Oh, okay.
But they're none of them, you know, you have to name a group.
Okay. The other question that I had was, were the building principals sent a letter by you, Dr. Catalino and Mrs. Hyatt, asking the principals to appoint a parent for this, whatever committee structure is decided now?
No, no. Communication was sent to the PTA, PTO presidents, asking them if they'd be interested in being part of this conversation. And the second, sorry, no, so no. It wasn't sent to the principals, it was sent to the PTA presidents.
Okay, thank you. And was it communicated to anyone that you would be the chairman of whatever committee?
No, the communication said that myself and a board member will co-facilitate the meet, the first meeting.
Oh, the first meeting, okay. And the other question I had, which I think we discussed with our lawyer, so I believe I understand it, in terms of the recognition that was initially prepared many years ago for the DWPC, my understanding that that was technically a one-year kind of thing.
Right, technically, any resolution of that nature is for that year, it needs to be brought up again each year.
And was the purpose of it to allow them, because I thought, I heard this somewhere in our conversations, to give them kind of use of the building? Or was it just to give them recognition as a group that would represent parents? I'm not clear on why there needed to be a resolution.
I don't know either. It predates me by many years. But, again, I'm not sure why that, why that resolution.
Before I give up the floor, I just want to echo Mr. Shaughnessy's remarks. I think that all of us intended that there certainly would be an ongoing group that would have, you know, the goal of which I would think is to have communication amongst the schools, which I believe some speakers said was one of the positive aspects of group. And also, that would be representative. And I think that came up in our conversations and some comments, that it really, in my mind, needs to be representative of the PTOs and that are currently serving the kids and of all the groups. Because otherwise, it isn't representative, and that's important. So, anyway, thank you.
Mrs. Collins and Mrs. Guido?
I don't want to echo, although I want to echo part of what Mr. Jordan said, and I don't want to be redundant by any means, but I too had several of those calls, because once again, I just want to say, most of us on this board are parents or grandparents. There's no way that we want to stifle that voice. We had said it the last time. I encourage everybody to look, it's now up, the video from the meeting from September 7th, where at least three of us spoke to that idea. It's just time for a change in terms of, as I said last time, to scheduling. Not every parent can come in in the middle of the day, the living society in our, most parents work. So, we're trying to be responsive. And also, if you notice, as we had, Mr. Shaughnessy wanted to revisit this resolution, but it is not on tonight's agenda, because several of us had said last meeting as well, we felt like if we were going to reconfigure this, we wanted to have something in its place. And when we looked at where we're going in consultation with our attorneys, it looks like we do have this policy, Policy 1910, which is available on our policy manual, will probably come back to the policy committee, which, you know, I happen to be involved with. So, I just think that that's important, that you hear us, and you look at that video, and you see the commitment that we do have to parents. We are parents. I have two boys in my A-school now and one graduate. There's no way that we want to stifle that voice. We want to reinvigorate it. We want to look for ways that we can be responsive. Enough said? Thank you.
Well, I'll be reiterating some of what had been said, but I think that we need to understand that our intent is never to stifle the parents from being involved. We want all parents to be involved with our school and our children, because they've got stake in the game. And I also think, if you look at what happened, if this board intended not to do anything, one or two people could not have stopped that. It had to be a consent of board to say, we'll take a look at it. So, it's not just one or two people that say, oh, well, there's a couple people that's in favor, and everybody else is against. That's not the case. We all want to look at what is in the best interest of our schools, and how can we pull other people in? And change sometimes is very good, because obviously, there are several schools that were not participating. And we wanted to find out, how can we get all of the schools to participate, so that we get a greater impact and greater understanding of what it is that the parents are talking about? So, I think it's important to understand that that position is the position of the board, and not just one or two people, all of us.
I just want to say, I'm glad it's being reconsidered. I'm glad it's coming back to policy, and I'm glad we made a conversation about it. And I'm confident that we'll come to a place where we are, there's a representative body that everyone is happy with and that's productive and that we can afford a parent contribution.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
I think it's appropriate now, we have a resolution on the floor, so to dispose of that resolution, I would like to move that we refer to the policy committee.
I'll second that.
Just a comment on that?
Yes.
So, the reason mention was made of Policy 1910 is because there's a sentence in there that the District-wide Parents Council is directed to recognize the official parent organization in each school. Now, that's the only reference in the policy manual to the District-wide Parents Council. And the resolution from 2002 was never put into policy. So, a resolution that isn't put into policy only has, is only valid for the year that it was passed. If it goes into policy, at each reorganization meeting, the first meeting in July, one of the resolutions is to reapprove all of the existing policies. So, that's how something continues from year to year. So, it's a technicality, but, you know, it's, I think it's the appropriate way now to deal with this issue, is to take, is to put it back into the policy committee to work on it. And policy committee is board members and members of the administration. The meetings are public. And so, I think that's the appropriate forum to consider District-wide Parents Council or whatever, you know, district parent participation in the school system, in the school district. And it's, you know, it's something that we really want to, we encourage, we want it. It's not something that we want to dismiss.
Any other comments? All those who are figuring motion? Who's saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Any other old business?
I was just wondering if, I know anyone who's received kind of a spreadsheet of enrollment numbers and by class size or by class section. And we had some discussion about a few JFK kindergarten and chambers third grade, but I'm just wondering if that data was available to the board yet or not.
As I usually say, I try not to give the board that until October, because, you know, even within, even within the teacher's contract, we have 30 days to make moves that we have to make within students. We have, but I know that, I'll just talk very generally, but I will make the census available to the board prior to this, and in the next court package. The, we had the kindergarten situation at JFK has been resolved. We had an open new section in kindergarten, lowering the class sizes there. We have a third grade at chambers where we do have three sections of 26, 26, and 27, I believe. We've already discussed this individually, we're going to provide the support that they need in those classrooms in the form of teaching assistants. The K-1, 2 priority that is set on board for 22 or fewer students, we have in every K-1, 2 classroom in the K-12 school district, we have 100 sections of K through 4, and of them, four have more than 25 students. And of those four, they're all fourth or third or fourth grade, so not K-1 or 2. So, we're working on pretty good percentages there. 100% compliance with the board's, you know, target of 22 or fewer on K-1, 2, and only four above 25 in the rest of the district. We're pleased with that. And every year, we have this conversation probably right around this time last year about capacity. And every year, we're going to have slight bumps here and there on things. When we do that, we have to look and see what we can do is pursue for support. Again, you know, we changed the special permissions procedures a little bit last year, and that did help. Again, we did, but we are still, there's still that time where we say, okay, this is a deadline, we have to tell parents yes or no. So, we tell parents yes or no, and then we have an influx between the 15th of August and the 15th, or the 1st of September. And, you know, it's not a perfect system, but it's working pretty well. So, we're pleased with our class sizes. We're going to provide support for those with high numbers. We are, you know, and we look at that, the special permission thing we need to look at as well, you know. But that's, I think we did a really good job this year, and we will provide support where we have those. The only way out of that kind of thing is if we redistrict every year. And, you know, we start cutting up neighborhoods and sending them to different schools every year. And I don't think that's anything any of us like to do.
I think it's wonderful that the majority of the class sections are below that number. The discussion, when they are over, like in the chamber situation, that's a discussion at the building level, correct? But the teachers are being asked what supports they need to make it work.
Yeah, we really do, principals usually come to Mr. Verge or now Dr. Felton, and we will then have a discussion of, you know, what would you like? Now, there's sometimes, there's not a lot of choices. You know, opening another section at chambers, that's not an option at this point, because there's no place to put another section. So, you know, another thing we could have done was, we could have collapsed a second grade and still been at 22 or fewer. We actually moved it to 22 in all those sections, and add a fourth grade and reduce those. But knowing the board's, you know, the board's goal of 22 or fewer K-1, 2, if we had one student transfer in, or one, you know, something that we'd be back up there. So, the overall belief was a third and fourth, K-1, 2 is our goal, third and fourth, when we went above that 22, we would look to see what resources we could bring to bear on those situations.
Old business? Okay, we left a bit of business undone last week. We voted to actually submit our amendments, any resolutions in this one, in writing. I'm going to ask a question. How many people went through and read, actually read my email today, about only looking at the first ten? So...
I read the email, but I didn't read the first one. I read the email, but I didn't read the first one.
All right, well, since we have a question, before the convention, would you like to postpone the discussion until next year or after?
Yes.
Yes, so that you do have time for you to do it. There are 20 resolutions that were recommended by the NIST team, and there were four that were not. We can discuss the whole thing, but, all right. I'd like to break it up into two, so try and limit yourselves to 10 or 12. All right. So... Just... Yes, you're welcome. Will that go on the agenda? That was a little of mine. Any other old business? All right, so around new business, does anyone have any bits of new business before we get on to the discussion budget priorities? This is Jordan.
It was suggested to me, I wish I had thought of it, but somebody raised the issue of what we are asking for a moment of silence for someone in our community, and perhaps a written record of that could go to a family, because I do think that family members do appreciate that, and might not be aware that there was. So should I offer that as a question?
Yes.
I believe that we may give practice to notify family members when moments of silence are made in honor of whatever they were.
Any discussion? Who have an idea of what's going to happen later? So all those in favor? And I opposed?
We'll put it in the policy also.
I'm just, I'm just thinking of the logistics. Hopefully, you can get an address. Sometimes it's tough.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, we can...
Yes, if it's a teacher, we have that availability. And it's a, usually, if it's a community member, there's something in there, okay?
I'm sure.
Any other new business?
I just had a question. I've been hearing a lot about a course at the middle schools. I know it's at Bailey, I'm not sure about Miller, called CSL H. And I'm just wondering if someone could talk about that a little bit.
Mrs. Bongo?
So CSL is Career and Service Learning. It basically took on, took over the PBL, because as we all know, PBL should not really be a class, it should be an approach, it's a best practice. So CSL became a class that we created. It was created two years ago, when we decided to move PBL and the inquiry-based approach into classrooms. And it's very similar to working with the CTE department and working with FACS in terms of career exploration, you know, looking at different, you know, work sites and different projects, and being able to, you know, really explore different avenues for different careers, different paths in education to lead to those careers. So, you know, some of our end goals that you've seen on the website would be now in the CSL class, for example, because there's some community components that are involved in that.
So I'm hearing it's the exact same curriculum as FACS.
It isn't the exact same curriculum.
Okay, that's close.
And I'm happy to, I can share those curriculum maps. We have curriculum maps for FACS, we have curriculum maps for the CSL.
And what happened to keyboarding?
So we have keyboarding still at middle level, we have keyboarding at, but we moved to fifth grade now.
To fifth grade?
Mm-hmm.
Was it at eighth, was it in eighth?
It was.
And, okay, why did we move it on to fifth grade?
Basically, to create this Career and Service Learning piece, because we wanted to keep that. So we have, it also has to do with who's teaching a keyboarding class.
You just, can you expand again the acronyms? So CSL is...
Career and Service Learning.
And PBL?
Well, it's Project Based Learning.
And FACS is?
Family and Consumer Science.
Thank you.
And CTE is Career and Technical Education.
Okay, so I guess we'll open up the floor to discussion of budget parents. Just, it's just a preliminary discussion. We will be having a public forum in November. You have plenty of time for you to bring up, you know, on your board's agenda, any new ideas.
Well, I think one, you know, I mean, it's still pretty far out, but when we do discuss the Mahar, renovation of Mahar, movement of the administration offices there, if that happens, universal pre-K there, and those are things that we're going to have to, those are certainly going to have budget implications if not for 2017, 2018, we have a three-year budget projection that's going to impact that.
I would make it appropriate to say, although we set a protocol of having the information back to the 19th, it looks as though we may have it earlier than that. And we'll make it available for the board to see. I have a spot for him.
I suppose I'll let each keep that little flexibility and not announce it.
I said, if we have it, we'll make it available.
We should be ready for it.
Okay. Any other considerations?
Well, I made a suggestion to the Policy Committee about revisiting a gifted and talented program that the board considered in 2010. And if that moves forward, that's something that would have budget implications if it were to be adopted and implemented.
Very preliminary discussion, we'll revisit it on a regular basis. All right, which brings us to board member announcements. Now, I have two just business announcements before we go on. We're funding the library this week, letter 2020. So we have Dr. Schobowitz, who's been very involved from the Elkses, and Mr. Shaughnessy as well. They're asking for us to make sure that we have at least one member from the board community at large, the mother of the shirt, the parent, involved in 2020 as well, make a commitment to it for this coming year. So please refer to that letter, and if you are, yourself are interested, you could, somebody else maybe, please reach out to them, so that, because you're usually tied up with presentations when we have the 2020 meetings. Correct? So you would want someone who prepares this? Right. Correct. All right, if you have anything to add to that, Mr.?
Well, Dr. Schobowitz makes a point.
So she can be the representative.
Well, she's going to be involved even if she isn't.
Correct.
Well, I just have the representation of meetings from this board, which has been great. And Mr. Shaughnessy has been a member and has some meetings. That says Ms. Tacham, and Ms. Tach. So he's been actually well represented. And I think we have some exciting initiatives coming up to put around the Orange School for the summer year. So I'm very excited.
Great, wonderful. And the other thing is, which you didn't have in your library, but we'll get it out tomorrow, is the multicultural conference at SUNY New Paltz on November the 18th. Last year, we had four representatives that we attended. There's a registration form. We signed up for different sessions last year, and we all placed in the same sessions. So actually, we'd like to include a request that that not occurred yet, and that we have an opportunity to get a sampling out of the sessions, so that we can share all the information. So we'll have a note attached for our application, if anyone's interested. And you all have the application out tomorrow, and please specify which sessions you're interested in, if you are, yes.
I think I went to that event two years ago. And if I'm not mistaken, it would be appropriate for some high school students to attend.
Some of the districts did bring students.
So I'll get this into a suggestion, and I'll get this information to Mr. Rondo, and she and Mr. Reiner can make that.
Okay. And trustees, please consider having the application tomorrow. All right. Any other board announcements?
Actually, Shyla from the All Supremacy Board Association emailed me today to ask if any board members will be attending the Thursday, October 6th meeting at 6:00 AM. So if you could let me know, Jim?
I don't know.
Who else?
I don't know.
I will try.
What time is it?
6:00.
It's at 6:00 PM.
And we're ready to go. No. Coffee and conversation this Saturday at Farmer's Market. I only have a volunteer for the morning, which was, yeah, we need to volunteer for the 11:30, 2:00 PM shift. Two volunteers, actually. At Farmer's Market.
Maybe, I mean, I'm out of town, so I wish I could go, but maybe you could go, like, when are the most people there usually?
Do you want me to take, if you'll take the first shift?
Okay. Everybody else? Is it the middle? So at the end, no one's ever, everybody leaves at the end, or in the morning?
Well, that was their request, that we be there the whole...
Oh, they did. Yeah, they did.
We'll try. We all want you to go until evening last night. All right, now we're at the second opportunity for public participation, so if anyone would like to address the board, we're pretty much in the same two minutes. This person will let you know when we're approaching the two minutes, that's not a conversation. So if anyone would like to address the board at this juncture, please approach back.
Morning, Howard. I just wanted to say how incredibly exciting I think the high school project is. When I see the slides and hear the reports by PBL, I'm just so proud that this district of, you know, the community supported the referendum and is actually doing the work. I have three children graduated from Houston High School, they all live in the city, and they periodically come up to visit me on the bus. And the first thing we do, first, they insist we go to Starbucks first, but then we drive by the high school. And it's become our routine that they, that they see the, see every, see the progress there. And they're not as excited as I am, but I think that they're pretty excited and they're really proud of their alma mater, that they, they believe that it can only get better, and they have a good education. So congratulations to all involved.
Hi, my name is Jan Kornbeck. I just wanted to know, when did the email go out to the PTO presidents to reach out to them about that film?
Oh, 10 days coming?
Okay, because I never received it. And I'm the cross, I was the CrossFit PTO president until August 31st, and I don't think the new president received it either, because we had a PTO meeting last week, and a parent was already appointed by our principal for that new committee that we want formed. So I don't, I don't know why, how, the wires are getting crossed in a factory.
Yeah, I mean, I have the email, it went out to, it went out from the communications department, but...
Any mail?
I'm really excited to have the budget for next year already being discussed in September. It almost makes me tingly a little bit. I know, before I got involved with the District-wide Parents Council, the most important committees for me were technology, the budget committee, and I just thought, oh, geez, I'm going to have all the stuff on that didn't have. I'm still hoping, you know, I still, I keep hearing that there is, there's things that they still have, but I still see over the 15 years that there's, I still feel a budget crunch. And I thought the budget crunch might have been, oh, it's because of what's happening in Towne and Holster. But that's why I keep saying, I, I'm very sad that Dr. Pedelea and all those other schools were not successful, because I work in that area, and I see what happens there. I work in Boston, and see what's happens in their poorest community. Kids in poor communities, their schools are not having what kids in wealthier school districts have. So for me, I'm excited, I hope the budget process and all that information gets on the website, so people can ask more questions. And I'm going to be that speaking wheel that says every year, that I know on the budget list, I spent over $6,000, I think $7,500 to participate in the Mitt Hudson School study that used to be at New Paltz College, which is now at Mount St. Mary College, and it was a very valuable document to me, because I came from a business background, and they could help you compare small schools to small schools, and Ulster County schools to Ulster County schools, and oranges with apples, and all the things I had heard. And I just don't understand how you keep saying we don't get that before, or they're not providing that before. I saw the calendar, I read it on the, on the website, and I hope we're doing the athletics thing, because I know in athletics, JD football doesn't have an announcer or a scoreboard, I don't know what the score is. Tennis, we couldn't get a ball machine or the things. There still seems to be cuts. And for me, I'm not saying sports are everything, or that music is everything, or a band is over 200 again, so that's exciting. Amazing things are happening. When it comes to the budget process, we need that meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Superintendent has informed me there was need for a second executive session, their personal mission. Bernadette has been in the action, coming forward, executive session, so the only action will take me to the general.
First mission, what we are... Appointing history of particular person?
Appointing history of particular individuals. So I need a motion. All those in favor?